Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It is now 5:30, and I will call this regular meeting of the Burnsville City Council to order. It is our tradition to stand for a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. We invite you to join us. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Well, the Clerk note that all council members are present. We continue to look at how we find creative solutions during this global pandemic. And so tonight, our meeting is being conducted in person. All of our city council members and staff are in the council chambers and practicing social distance. Members of the public may attend in person if they like. Members of the public may also watch this meeting online at burnsvillemn.gov/meetings or Comcast Channel 16 or 859. If you would like to participate during the meeting remotely, you may call 651-372-8299 or join the meeting online at zoom.us/join. More information is available on our meetings webpage and in the council agenda packet. The next item on the agenda is announcements. Our announcements have to do with all of our upcoming meetings. We have scheduled upcoming meetings. Regular council meetings are for Tuesday, September 8 at 5:30 PM and Tuesday, September 22 at 5:30 PM. We have a special work session scheduled for Tuesday, August 25 at 5:30 PM and a work session scheduled for Tuesday, September 15 at 5:30 PM. The next item on the agenda is citizens' comments. This is the opportunity for anyone in the audience to address the council on an item that is not on the printed agenda and not in application form that will be coming before us at a future date. Seeing no one, we will move on. The next item is additions to the final agenda, and this is for emergency items only. Ms. Mascali?
No, Madam Mayor.
Members of the council. Okay, thank you. We now move on to the consent agenda. The consent agenda is a group of items that's considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. However, an item on the consent agenda can be removed for a separate discussion and vote. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes an item to be removed from the consent agenda for a separate discussion and vote? Ms. Mascoli?
No, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Members of the council? May I have a motion to adopt, please?
Will you approve consent agenda?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. And the motion carries. Thank you. We now move on to the regular agenda. And the first item on the regular agenda is a public hearing, and this is a resolution to adopt the continued 2019 street improvement assessments. And presenting is Ms. Dezerud, our city engineer.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. This is a holdover from last year at the meeting for the 2019 public improvements for special assessments. The council requested, the staff requested that you continue one property because there was some issues with a contractor error that led to some damage for the property. For the past year, staff has been working with the insurance and the contractors, and everything seems to be almost resolved except for the matter of the deductible. $1,000 deductible is in our hands right now. We will release it to the homeowner should the insurance company not. So they could use that to pay towards their assessment or for whatever they'd like. So we think that everything is resolved, and I don't believe that the homeowner had planned to come today. They did not issue any objection to leaving the assessment tonight.
So they're happy with the outcome?
I think as happy as one could be.
Any questions for Ms. Dezerud? Okay, thank you. This is a public hearing. I will open the public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to speak to this item? Anyone who wishes to speak to this item? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. May I have a motion to adopt, please?
Will you approve?
Councilmember Workman makes the motion, seconded by councilmember Keely. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. And the motion carries. Thank you. The next item is also a public hearing, and this is to approve a 3.2% off sale liquor license for QuickTrip, Inc., doing business as QuickTrip Number 585. And presenting this evening is our city clerk, Ms. Collins.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, this is QuickTrip's application for their new location. They also have a location over on Crystal Lake Road West. They have had that location there with the liquor license as well since 1995, and there have been no issues. Their new location is set to open on September 10. Investigation was not necessary for the manager of this location because it was the same manager that came from the other location to manage. Same with the investigation of the officers was not necessary because same officers were involved. The reviews have been conducted from the planning and building department, and everything is in order. The application is also in order, and the fees have been paid. Staff finds no reason to deny the application. We did receive a phone call, that the council received regarding a complaint about having a liquor license so close to crosstown liquor, and we both know, we know that they're not the exact same type of liquor license, but this is a public hearing. Elliot is here from QuickTrip. If you have any questions, otherwise, I stand for any questions.
Any questions for Ms. Collins? And I understand the residents who was opposed to granting this liquor license, but she's not aware that this is very different from a liquor store. And this is 3.2% off sale, so it's not as if we're looking at apples to apples. And the other thing is that this is something that we do, and there is no reason to deny. Okay. This is the public hearing. Is there anyone? I open the public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to speak to this item? Anyone who wishes to speak to this item? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. Members of the council, I need a motion to approve.
I still move?
Second.
Okay. Councilmember Schultz makes the motion, seconded by councilmember Gustafson. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. And the motion carries. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is a discussion item. This is an accessory dwelling unit ordinance check-in, and Ms. Regina D., our Assistant Community Development Director, is presenting. Ms. Dean?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. The applicant, or I'm sorry, not the applicant, but the property owner which sparked this conversation tonight is in the lobby, so I'd like to invite them in just so that they could hear the discussion tonight. Give them a couple seconds to walk in. Thank you. So accessory dwelling units, again, this request is really a check-in with council. Typically, you would see this at a work session, kind of as a sketch plan to get feedback and consensus to move forward, but because of timing and my understanding that work sessions are pretty full, and we thought this would be a good opportunity to bring this forward tonight. So we had a recent request through our building department. Permit came in for review for an R1 lot, so a single-family lot, and we require a minimum 10,000 square feet for our R1 lots. And this particular request was for a detached accessory dwelling unit, which we do allow on properties that are one acre or larger, so 43,560 square feet or larger. And detached accessory dwelling units are subject to a maximum size. And so when this was going through the review, planning staff noted that, one, the detached accessory dwelling unit is not a permitted use within that particular, because of the particular lot size, and that the size of the accessory dwelling unit, even if it was allowed, would not meet our threshold for size because it would exceed the maximum allowed. That was brought to the attention of the applicant, and an option was given that they could pursue an attached accessory dwelling unit. This is an example of the submittal drawings that the applicant provided with their application, just to give you a sense of what this can look like. Of course, it would have to meet all of building codes and accessibility requirements per those standards, but that's something that we put on pause to, before, so this hasn't thoroughly been vetted by our city staff yet because of the issue that was brought up through zoning. Just as a quick overview background, I think all but councilmember Workman were on the city council at the time that this went through a governance process. So councilmember Workman was on the planning commission at that time, so is very familiar with this as well. The governance process basically was sparked through an all-day work session in 2017. Council gave direction for city staff to go through this process. So it was an environmental scan. White paper was provided that looked at far market cities, as well as Minneapolis, St. Paul, a handful of other cities in the Twin Cities metropolitan area. I think we looked at Oregon and Connecticut, New York examples. There was a handful of other examples throughout the country that we provided. Expert testimony, we had people come in, and a realtor came in, a tiny home, people that lived in tiny homes, advocates of accessory dwelling units came in. Lenar came in and spoke about their multi-generational housing. And then there was some, the next meeting was council dialogue and discussion. And at the end of that, council directed staff to prepare an ordinance to allow accessory dwelling units within Burnsville, giving a couple of options. One, the detached version for the acre or larger, and then an attached version, which would be allowed on all of our R1 lots and R1A as well. I do want to note that we do allow, it's not necessarily classified as an accessory dwelling unit, but we do allow, I would say, multi-generational housing where there is no separation between the units, or maybe a door that doesn't lock, and no firewall. That would not be classified under our ordinance. It's basically allowed, and people can pass through, but generally, it feels separate or can feel separate. I do also want to note that with our accessory dwelling units, we do allow people to rent out the accessory dwelling unit if they choose. They would, of course, have to obtain a rental license for that. With accessory dwelling units, we have not had any applications to date through our building department for attached or detached. We do anticipate that we might receive another detached accessory dwelling unit. They've been working with staff, but I believe that one will be on an acre or larger parcel. But that's not, we have not received any formal applications since the ordinance was approved in 2018. You may or may not remember this map from our process in 2018, but these maps just highlight our 10,000 square foot properties and then our one acre or larger properties. So not, or I would say, most of our single-family properties in Burnsville meet that 10,000 square foot threshold. There might be some anomalies out there that are under that, but just a point of reference. There are, it's a good makeup of our housing stock. And then just a visual example of what we allow in Burnsville for accessory dwelling units. You'll see in the blue graphic, the attached version, I highlighted that area, and to be an official accessory dwelling unit, you would have to have that firewall separation between the two, and two separate entrances. So we did think of some options for city council to consider should you decide that you do want to make changes to our city code, and they're outlined in the background as well as on this PowerPoint slide. Option number one, you could consider to allow accessory dwelling units that are detached on all R1 lots, as long as they meet the setbacks for accessory structures, so typically like a 10-foot setback on side or rear. You could allow accessory dwelling units and allow an increase, let's see here, let me read this. You could allow detached accessory units on all R1 and R1A properties and increase the maximum accessory dwelling size to less square footage than the principal structure footprint. So what this means, right now, we have a cap. It's 33% of the principal structure, or a cap of 960 square feet. And point of reference, this was modeled after the Eagan ordinance, which that was part of the direction of council at the time that we developed the accessory dwelling unit ordinance. So you could decide, you know what, Burnsville's different. We want to eliminate that percentage cap and just say, as long as it's less than the principal structure, we're fine. You can allow detached accessory units on all R1 and R1A properties and increase the maximum ADU size to 50% of the principal structure. Again, we allow 33% now. Make it an even 50%, but have that cap still at 960 square feet. Or other, maybe you have some other ideas that might work. Or keep the ordinance as is. Like I said, we haven't had any formal applications for accessory dwelling units, and maybe, you know, this was changed two years ago. Maybe you feel that it's fine as is, meets the overall general public's needs, and direct the property owner to work with staff to meet zoning code. So tonight, I am asking for recommendation or direction on next steps. Certainly open to any questions or further discussion, but the direction that I've, or recommendations that I've presented are to either direct the owner to request an ordinance amendment via the development review process. It's about a 60 to 80 day process. Indicate that there's support for no change, and encourage the property owner to revise their building plans to meet code. Or direct staff to add this change to the housekeeping list for 2021 if you feel that more research is needed, but have a good indication that you do want to make some changes, but just want more information, maybe want to change that section of the code altogether, and look at more items, more performance standards that are in there, make more adjustments. Add that to the planning commission work plan for 2021, or add this to the list of city code updates that we anticipate will start in 2021. That may be, it could be, I don't know, a year, year and a half long process before, you know, that's all vetted through and complete. So some things to think about. Certainly happy to answer any questions. Like I mentioned, the property owners that sparked this conversation are in the audience as well. Thank you.
Does the applicant want to speak?
Will you?
Yeah, please.
Can I take this up?
Sure. Your name and address for the record?
My name is Fred Wees, excuse me. I live at 13605 Wellington Crescent. Been a resident now three years. My wife and I just got married three years ago, next week, so three years. She's been a longtime resident of Burnsville. She's a doctor at Fairview Hospital. Her parents and her lived at the property for 20, 25 years combined. Little bit about me, I guess a little background on me. I'm in sales. I'm an auctioneer. I've been an auctioneer since 1992. I do a lot of fundraiser, benefit auctions, nonprofits, and stuff like that. I've been in sales all my life. Public speaking's not a big deal to me. I'm passionate, whatever I do, I like to do it 110%. If you see the blueprints here, you talk about Eagan and you talk about various cities, what they're doing, why not Burnsville be the leader? I'm bringing to you probably the best ADU that you're going to see come down the pike in a long time. I'm sold on Burnsville. I'm going to be here. This is a business that's going to take off. You look at the pandemic and what's happening in the accessory dwellings. I have two parents that are in a nursing home down Iowa, okay? They're spending time, they've been quarantined. I'm looking through a glass window. I would have loved to had them in that unit in my backyard. That's what we can do. The article you talked about in 2017, 2018, I actually read that, and I thought, wow, what a town, this progressive that's actually thinking down the road a little bit. And so my background, auctioneering, I was a home housing director for Park Construction out in the North Dakota in oil fields. And I was sent out there because I have agricultural background, I have an ag business. My dad bought cattle out there, and there's a lot of feeders. So I knew the farmers, and I could talk. I had to find housing. And one of the things I came across was, is a guy out of Idaho that was building tiny homes. And I ended up going to work for this guy because I ended up renting a ton of his buildings. He built them for me, and it sufficed, and it was great housing. Well, I came back after that experience. It's a long story, and I'm not going to go into it, but I came back and I built a better mousetrap. He was doing a sprayed foam stick building. These things, if you look, I got information we can go over, but they're SIP panel. I don't know if you know anything about them, but SIP panels are a great product. It's a panelized building. My goal is to build, you know, sign contract, four weeks later, deliver it. I want to make a business out of this. And in sales, guess what? If you don't, how do I, you've got to believe in the product you're selling. I work for Midwest Outdoor Resorts up here in Bloomington, right across from the Mall of America. I'm their top salesman. We're selling campground memberships. This company's looking at buying 10 to 12 of these, okay? I used to work for Breezy Point, number one top salesman for him. Bob Spiesel's looking at buying these. So this is something I want to have in my backyard as a model, a little mini-me that's going to look exactly like our house, it's going to aesthetically pleasing. I've already, the trees, if you look at the lot, if you can go to that photo, there's huge mature trees. My neighbors will not be able to see it. I've actually built a retaining wall and added to that photo and put evergreens in. There are going to be 10, 12, already done and ready in place, so it's going to be evergreens year-round. I'm just appealing to this board, I mean, I can go on, I'm a talker, you can tell, okay? But the reality is, I don't know your position, I haven't even met you yet, but I appreciate what you said. I don't want to wait a year or year and a half for some, you think about it. Are you guys going to, I want some action, in a sense. I'm going to be building these things in Arlington. I got a warehouse rented. The frames are going to be built in Henderson, in a little tiny farm that I just bought down there. I'm staying here and living here. I work at, three days a week, at Bloomington, but I want to be able to show, this location is ideal. I'm on 35W, that's why Burnsville, Minneapolis, have you noticed that thousands of people are leaving Minneapolis? They may be coming here, okay? So I'm hoping that you have a little bit of vision. Look at this, I need this as an example and a model, and I want to be able to show people what you could do if it's an Airbnb, a mother-in-law special, the he shed, she shed market. I wish I had it built when my parents went into the nursing home, stuff like that. And it could be a little extra income. Now, I know you guys want it to be aesthetically pleasing. I'm going to bring it to you aesthetically pleasing. It's going to be professionally done. This meets the Obama codes and exceeds them. If you guys have any vision with green going forward in this town, this is going to help you and get you some of your percentages or stuff like that. I've read articles on certain cities have to get certain amount of green. Is that true? Any nods of heads there?
We have a sustainability plan that we have in place.
So this could help you guys get some of those numbers. I'm actually working with a gal out of Colorado that's actually going to create a finance package for this where it's going to meet and exceed, they're going to get tax breaks. You, when you go to get a bank loan, what are they going to do? They could look up on their little app and see which loan you qualify for. Well, this one's going to be a green app that she's created. She saw my design, she said, this is the future. She actually wants to put electric car. I could sell a house and an electric car. I could put a Tesla shingle on this thing, batteries underneath this thing, I'm helping to sustain and charge. I'm not doing it on the first model, but this is something I want to go down the road. I came to town three years ago, and we got married, and my wife is excited about this. Obviously, I'm pretty passionate about it. She says, we'll get a game plan, put a business plan. So we went up to your score place up here and put a business plan, and met a couple CEOs, retired guys, and they say, here, so I got the business plan. I've got the demographics, I got the research. This is the future for a lot of, not everybody, but for the ADUs. And I would encourage this board to really, don't kick this can down the road. I'm a mover and a shaker. Everything, I don't do anything wrong. I don't think you can pick apart my design. SIP panels, this thing's the code and above and beyond. I had the state building inspector, because I wanted red flags to go up before I even got this far, if there's going to be any major issues, and there isn't. The state building inspector told me, get this thing to market before other people build these little tiny homes, and they don't do it the code, or they cut corners, and somebody dies in an accident or a burn, or, and then guess what? They're going to change the rules and they're going to stop the ADUs. He says, you're going to pass and exceed, and you're going to set the standard. And it's not going to be here, it's going to be here, okay? That's how excited about this product. This has been a four-year process. It's kicked in gear in the last two and a half years. My wife came up with the idea of putting it in our backyard. I actually was going to rent the lot and put it on, but I thought, why wouldn't I want to show people what they could do with their home? I don't know. I'm hoping that you guys receive this well. I'll shut up because I could tend, I could talk forever. I'm very passionate about this. Do you have any detailed questions? I can go into more.
Any questions? Yeah, councilmember Gustafson.
Is this portable? Can you move this around?
Actually, you're right. Part of my demographics and my research with this is, I'm looking at the baby boom generation, and I'm looking at the millennials. I know it sounds weird to compare those two, but the reality is, is the baby boomers are scaling back and shrinking, and they're looking at selling the big house and going into something in mobile. Now, when I say mobile, there's no chassis under it. It fits the modular home rules with the state building inspection. That was one of my biggest hurdles to get over. You know, everybody wants to build tiny home, and they want to go get a trailer that's, you know, eight foot and it's, you know, 10 feet wide, and it's going down the road like a camper, right? Well, it's got a chassis, and if you know anything about engineering and stuff, but look at your mobile home parts. What are they all? The pearlins are hanging out here, and they're going down the road bouncing. And you walk in any mobile home, and the windows are ajar, the doors are crooked, and they're crap, okay? I'm sorry for the French, but that's just the reality of mobile homes. Mine have a frame all the way around the outside, okay? I had an engineer that beefed it up, and I said, what's the minimum? And then, and double it. Okay, my frames are going to go down the road. The key, where I had about two years ago, my holdup was, how do I get them down the road? It's an oversized load, 16 wide, 44 feet long. How do I do that? Well, there's a guy who went to church in Hastings, three, four years. He's a, he has a company that does cross-country boat, these yacht, big yachts, and he has a high-performance, low-profile trailer that's 18 inches off the ground. And I talked to him, and he says, I can haul. He's actually going to designate one of my, one of his trailers to haul these things, because he hauls boats, east coast and west coast, and he sits in the middle of the country and does the Great Lakes. So he's going to do back hauls for me, and my business plan has a five-state territory. I'm actually, when I talked to the state building inspector, he was telling me, you're actually going to be, you're going to be zoned at the highest level, snow loads. I can sell them in Canada if I want to, but I don't want to right now. But I can do a five-state area. I'm licensed to go that far, but Minnesota has probably one of the highest standards, okay? And so if I meet Minnesota, guess what? I can sell north and south Dakota, Iowa, Wisconsin. And so I'm going to try and stay in a five-state territory until this thing takes off. Either I franchise it or, you know, get territories for somebody else, but it's going to start right here in Burnsville. And trust me, if you guys help me get this, Burnsville's going to get a lot of credit, okay? Because I'm not moving, I'm not going. My wife said when we were dating, A, I'm not moving from the house. I love going to Shakopee, the women's prison, when the traffic is going the other way, and vice versa when she comes home. She loves Burnsville. And she sold me on it and guess what? I like it too, okay? So that's why I'm here, that's why I'm investing. This isn't cheap. I paid all the engineers, the frame is engineered to the nth degree, SIP panels is, can back up their product. Thirty-six dollars a month to heat and cool this thing. There's no furnace, no ductwork, it's all in-floor heat. Solar roof, if I want to, as an option, or a generator. I wanna experiment with batteries, that's the future of solar. Excuse me, I gave you some water. And that's what I wanna expand and go into, but it's, it's like, I talked to Bob Spiesel, owner of Midwest Outdoor Resorts, do you guys buy a car without test driving it? Most people don't. But you know what? I gotta have this model built and pretty soon, I like to get it in the ground before snow flies, okay? The footings and the frame, I could build it in four days, it won't take me long, but I need to have permission. I've done everything right, by the books and went through the process, it's been a very good one. I've had no red flags, everybody treated me nice and professional and I was greeted well, even though when I was turned down, I emailed back and I appreciate you getting this to the agenda as fast as you did, if it was you or if it was somebody else. Any other questions, I can keep going.
And yet, Councilmember Schultz.
So, you are almost poster child for the type of person that I was hoping would come to Burnsville when I brought tiny homes and ADUs forward.
Is it you? Okay.
I'm very excited about what you're doing. I'm extremely excited that it's also a business that would be operating out of Burnsville, that's tremendously exciting. Frankly, if, if it were, if it was my vote today, and we'll see, I would allow detached ADUs on all R1 and R1A properties as long as the ADU does not exceed the footprint of the principal structure and the setbacks are met. And I would motion and I would vote on that today, but I will listen to my fellow city councilors first. I would also recommend that we do look on the rest of it as a change in twenty twenty-one for a city code update, but I do not wanna uphold this project while we take a deeper look at the rest of it. So with that, I will leave it to the rest of my councilors.
Councilmember Gustafson.
Well, you didn't talk about what I thought you were gonna talk about when you showed up here this evening.
Good or bad?
No, it's good.
Okay.
You brought a port, you know, I, when, when Care actually brought it up years ago, I was supportive of the ADUs at that time as well. In the, in the days of the COVID and our economy and what's going on, I believe living styles are going to change, we're gonna need housing as the economy is going to do what it's gonna do over the next few years, this isn't over by a long shot. I also know that from my commercial real estate life, business models are changing and where we do business is changing as well. And there are so many home businesses today that were always relegated to the office buildings and the office parks, and a lot of them aren't there anymore, their, people are in their homes doing this thing. And it's, it's really helping the economy move along as best we can in these times. I don't have, I've never had a problem with ADUs, I think, I think it's the future, my, I will tell you, I have an eighty-six-year-old mother who we struggle with at home and there's no way she's going into senior living, we know that. And if I had something like that in my backyard, it would, I live in a split, she could never live in the split because she could never get out of the floor of their bedrooms on. So it would, it'd be very difficult for her, so I, I, I see these as a, as a wave of the future, I really do. I think it's the way people are gonna live, I think you're gonna find parents moving in with their kids or kids moving in with their parents and one of them's gonna live in the ADU or vice versa, and it's gonna happen for a while and that's just the way our economy is gonna be. So I, I personally would be supportive of getting this business started, because I think, I think it's a, I think it's something we could really use in this country, no doubt.
And it took me, you know, I thought of this, I three, five years ago when I was out in North Dakota and I went to work for the guy and I sold a bunch of them, I sold forty-three, I love sales. When I believe in a product, guess what? It sells. I didn't get to the number one salesman in every job because I, but I, when I believe in something, watch out, okay? And so, I have to jump through some hoops here, but there's gonna be some, and I don't, I'm not here to cut corners, you know, and I'm sure you get this, I haven't been to your meetings, but I'm sure you come in here, somebody, people wanna try and cut a corner, just let this one slide, let this one in. I'm giving you everything, I've given you the architect, I've given you the engineer, I got a business plan that's, it's right spot on, I have the state building inspectors and tell me, get to market now, okay? And that was before the Corona thing or the pandemic that we got. So, I mean, thank you, those are words of encouragement, I didn't know what I was gonna come into today, I appreciate that.
If I may add, one of the things that I, I wasn't aware of that, the potential for the whole business model and, and one of the things that I just wanna make council aware of, we do have a home-based business, section of our city code that does talk about.
Exactly where I was gonna go.
Does talk about businesses and accessory structures, so I'd wanna look at, you know, based off of some of the statements that we learned tonight, that may be something that may need to be explored or caution, you know, the property owner that certainly, you know, an ADU can be lived in, but for business purposes, that may be something that needs to be.
Can I inject a little?
Sure.
I'm not gonna have anybody living in it, it's gonna be a model, okay?
No, we, we understand that, Mr. Wees. So one of the things that, with the product you have is a viable product, it's where you want to put it and it's a, a model, and so you're gonna have people coming in and out. The other part has to do with the neighbors. We always wanna make sure that when you're going to be doing something that impacts your neighbor's property value.
I've already talked to the neighbors?
So, yes, but it's not just your neighbors, because if we change the code to allow detached ADUs, that's not just your neighbors, it's throughout the whole city, the twenty-seven square miles in Burnsville. And so, we need people to have a voice, because it has a direct impact on their property value. When this product is a product for sale, it's not where you're going to have someone come and live in, but it is a product that we believe is viable. But is this the right place for you to have that model, if you will? Because you're, you said you wanted to do it elsewhere, but your wife convinced you to build it in your backyard, you know, and that's.
And that was a sales technique in a sense, because it's like, if you don't believe in the product and if you're not willing to do it, you know, all my bosses I work for, you gotta own the product that you're selling. And guess what? That's, I truly believe in that. So, I put my money where my mouth is, okay? It's going up in my backyard. It ain't gonna be a model forever. Eventually, hopefully, this, I've already got four or five people and two companies looking at ten, twelve of these. So, the reality is, it may be shut down after a year and then I use it for guests, friends or relatives of my own. So this isn't gonna be a long-term, maybe a five-year or less model, because if this takes off like I think, I've actually talked to, I don't know if I should say the company's name here on the meeting, but I've talked to a business that's actually looking at maybe putting a model there. So, it isn't gonna be long that it may go out, but I wanna be able to say, when I look you in the eye and say, will you buy one of these ADUs and I have one in my backyard? I mean, it's just like, if you're a Chevy dealer, you know, do you own one? Do you drive a Chevy? You know what I'm getting at? You gotta be able to back it up and that's, that's how my beliefs are. So I get where you're going and I never thought of that and we can explore that and I'm not, I'm not, I wanna do it correctly, but.
And I wanna make sure that the, the people in the community also understand what's going on, because we're changing something that took us, you know, over six months to go through that process and people had a voice.
Yep, yep.
That, and, and when we start to make those changes, it has a, it has a financial impact on them. So, we need to make sure that they understand what, what's happening here. And this is a business, a home-based business that you're, because.
Well, the model's gonna be, my business is in Arlington, I rented a facility down there.
Your model, it is a business, you're gonna, yeah. You, you said that it's a model, that you're going to have people coming in and taking a look at it, just like selling a car.
You bet, I'm not disagreeing, I'm not disagreeing.
Yes.
So, one of my thoughts though is, when you guys did it three years ago, guess who read that article? You reached out three, so it's been a slow process, you know, sometimes it goes high and low, but guess what? That encouraged me to, to look at Burnsville and that they're progressive and that they want to do something like this. I've heard inklings of people interested. Now, you know, I'll jump through the hoops, whatever it's gonna take, you know, because I just think it's an opportunity for everybody.
Councilmember Gustafson.
Yeah, I'd like to respond to the, the home-based business and I know we do have ordinances on that, but I would say in these times, we probably have a whole lot of home-based businesses in the city that are happening right now. And if we were to tell them they couldn't do it, we'd pretty much shut down our economy in this city. So, I don't take, I can see where we may, we need to look at that under, for legal purposes, but I don't look at that as a deterrent right now as to allowing new businesses to get started in our city.
Councilmember Schultz.
Well, actually, before I go, I would like to default my time to both counselor Workman and also to my other counselor, I just, I want all of our council members to check in on this before I come back on it.
Councilmember Workman.
Thank you. Yeah, I, I was fortunate enough to be on the planning commission when we first reviewed this and a lot of the time spent was kind of walking in a room with the lights off because we, we weren't sure what this was gonna look like when it came to us. A lot of it was kind of anticipating what it might be or, or, you know, speculating, which is why we landed on the, the code that we have, which I think has worked, you know, to this point. But here we are with kind of our first legitimate application and we're seeing just an area that might need to be massaged a little bit. And it's clearly a good product, a well-done product. And so, to Councilmember Schultz's point earlier, this does seem kind of like the poster child for what I think we all thought the ADU ordinance would be when we worked on it, you know, three, three-plus years ago. So I'm, I'm comfortable with this and I'd be up for discussion on which of the three options here we're comfortable with, but I've liked everything I've seen so far.
Councilmember Keely, do you have a comment to make? I know you didn't press a button, but.
I do. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, I am impressed with your presentation, I appreciate that. I, I had a similar concern that Ms. Dean pointed out as far as turning the backyard of your property into a business, but I'm, I'm kinda highly doubtful that you're gonna have lineup of cars and just, it's not a high-traffic kind of business, it's an occasional visit, it's no different from any other type of event, but, so I'm, I'm not concerned about that, but I do appreciate bringing that out, because I was thinking the same thing. Oops, what kind of home base is this?
And I didn't think of it either, honestly, I'm glad you did.
I do recognize that we have a pretty serious housing problem in, in Burnsville and the country. And a lot of it is affordable housing and some of it is just the availability of housing, because we have a, we have a severe inventory shortage. And it's, I think it goes beyond just the intergenerational housing issue. With baby boomers retiring, it's exacerbating it. And this is the kind of idea that I think helps, it's one option that helps mitigate that. There's a lot of different ways that every city can address the housing issue and making more housing available. And I think, when I reviewed our current ordinance that we created a couple of years ago, it looked, I mean, we, we put a lot of thought and process into it, we came up a good one. The one thing that always bugged me back then was, the one-acre minimum made it very limited in who could even take, participate in. It was like, okay, we kinda created this really for southwest Burnsville and a few other random lots, but it really wasn't a solution that was broad and covered all of Burnsville or more of Burnsville. And so, I think we have a lot of standards in place that are good. You follow them, because the product that you designed is a reflection of your main house. So, it looks great, I mean, it, it would look great, it would tie in and you've also included a bunch of screening, which I'm not sure that that was a requirement, Ms. Dean, but you've decided to put in all these trees to really respecting the neighbors, like, so, I'm, I'm open to this, I, I tend to like, I like the size that you chose, because I don't think what people, and maybe the lot size would dictate, that everybody's gonna wanna see a eighteen-hundred-square-foot house with a seventeen-hundred-and-fifty-square-foot ADU sitting behind it. That might, and maybe the setbacks wouldn't even allow that anyway, but I do like option number three, revising the code and allowing the ADU size up to fifty percent of the original structure. I think, does that fit your particular example? What's your, the size of your primary home?
Twenty-five hundred, I just looked it up today, twenty-five hundred.
And you're proposing to build?
Seven-hundred-and-five, seven-hundred-and-ten square feet.
So, well within that fifty percent. And, and so, I, I think your particular application and your project, well, it fits easily into that particular suggestion by staff. I don't think it's too big and I, the lot's big enough for it. Under the spirit of the discussion that we had two years ago, or whatever it was, this is kinda what I was envisioning and I think we even had some sort of, but when we, when we got to that minimum lot size, we just eliminated eighty percent of the city from even participating in it. So, I, I hear what Madam Mayor is saying and I'm definitely sensitive to the fact that we went through a very thorough process and we invited a lot of our community involved to make that decision, to create what we have today. I think what we're faced with here is just a slight modification to that, to allow more people into this party, because we, like I said, we really limited it by having that one-acre lot minimum. So, I, I anticipated this discussion would end up coming back for that reason and I think council member or two may have made note of that, one acre being a potential, but it was a heavy lift back then just to get where we were, are today. And look at the evidence, no one's, staff pointed out, no one has come before you, no one has come since we've updated our ADU to put in an accessory dwelling. And I have a feeling that's a lot to do with, we've only made it available to a very small slice of the city, so I wouldn't expect a lot coming in. We sort of designed it not to bring a lot in. So I'm, I'm open to updating that. I like number three with a fifty percent cap personally.
Councilmember Schultz.
I, I will, I would, I would settle for number three. I lean towards number one, however, I'm happy to work with my fellow council members if they are feeling good with option number three. My only question is, can we have it at the fifty percent of principal structure and just remove the nine sixty square feet? Long as it's fifty percent of the principal structure.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know that that cap needs to be.
Yeah, my, my aversion to that one is just an arbitrary cap again of nine sixty, which is odd.
Right, a four-thousand-square-foot house versus a seventeen-hundred-square-foot house, the nine sixty is not conducive to the, as a ratio? It's like, it's an arbitrary fix, the fifty percent, I think just fixes the problem.
Yeah, I, I agree with that.
Here, I agree as well. Okay, is someone making a motion or direction to staff? Staff is looking for direction, it's not, so that's what they're asking for is direction.
I'd be happy to make a motion.
So I'm, if I may interrupt, I'm asking for direction not only on the options to consider for changing code, but then also the timing of making the changes. So from a staff standpoint, we do have a lot of projects in application or on our current plate right now. So, we're suggesting that one, the applicant, the property owner, apply to make the change. This is similar to the, I would say, medical dispensary recently.
Because they, they have not put an application in.
Right, to make a request to change the ordinance or that this be placed on the twenty-twenty-one, perhaps, housekeeping agenda. Or, we do have some items later on in, in the year, in the next couple of months that could be shifted, such as changing the mixed use for some of our properties, that can be pushed further and then this could rise higher as, as a compromise, I would say.
And staff is just asking for direction because of their prioritization of all of the work that needs to get done. Councilmember Schultz.
Okay, I understand that staff is looking for direction, but it also appears that we have an applicant who would like to do the. But it also appears that we have an applicant who would like to do this and they would like to be on a timeline as well. So I will make a motion that we change our ordinance, or change our zoning to allow detached ADUs on all R1 and R1A properties and increase the maximum ADU size allowed to 50% of the principal structure as long as setbacks are met. Do I have a second?
Second.
There is a second, and there's a discussion. I will call in councilmember Gustafson for a discussion.
I, I agree with your motion. Can they do a variance or something so they can proceed with their project while we're going through this?
Okay. Ms. Dean.
So, um, the variance, not only our city code ordinance, but also state statute has very specific language that talks about practical difficulties and, and you cannot create, it can't be a self-imposed, I guess, request. And maybe our attorney can get into a little more further detail with that.
Yeah, I'd like to know if there's a track that they can take to expedite what they're doing while we go through what could be a protracted discussion down the road.
I would say the ordinance amendment would be the more appropriate route.
And that's going to take a year.
If the property owner makes application for that, we can fast-track that. We'll, what we'll end up doing is likely having one of our consultants review the request or we'll manage it so that we review this and one of our consultants reviews, you know, different projects that are in right now. A little bit of shuffling.
But how long will that take?
Oh, so that's what I'm trying to find out. How long will that take?
60 to 80 days.
Okay.
And that accommodates for public hearing notice that needs to occur, publication in the newspaper, and also landing on a planning commission date that, that fits. So the typical review process is, is about 60 to 80 days.
Joel, that would make all the legal...
Mr. Jamnik.
That is as fast as you can go with a land use change. You are statutorily obligated to have this go through planning commission. So it is a two-step process.
Okay.
So as Ms. Dean indicated, we will have to have, if council, we take the council's direction, with or without a development application, we will have to have a two-step process. Planning commission then back, much like the KMM agenda item that you have on your agenda this evening.
And that's still a 60 to 80-day deal then for us?
Correct.
All right, thank you.
So there is a motion and discussion. One of the things that is troubling for me is not having the voice of the community at, at large because you're making a change where the community was aware of. And you have a very good product. Yes, there is a public hearing?
I would just interject because we are suggesting a change to the city code.
Yeah.
There will be a public hearing notice for the ordinance amendment. So the public will have an opportunity to review and advise the planning commission, which will help them formulate their recommendation to the city council.
Yeah, and that's where I was going, that I, with an ordinance change, there is a public hearing. Because my first concern is that the community doesn't have a voice. And the community needs to have a voice on something like this that will have an impact on the value of their property. Because what I look at is that if everybody, they just need to know. For me, that's what it's about. They need to know what's happening and how it will impact them. You have a product and everybody agrees it's a good product. And everybody agrees that it's a different product that may be useful, not only for Burnsville, but for others. So I don't think the product is the issue here. It's how we deal with it so that we have, we all live together in harmony and how it affects other people's property.
That's one of those, I think I took it to another level of professionalism, aesthetically pleasing, showing...
No, I understand. No, it's not the product. It's how the ordinance and, and the zoning changes that affects other folks.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes, please.
So you, you've been mayor now 20-some years, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so you're plugged into the community. I've been here three years. This is, I'm looking at a demographics and more of a macro.
Sure.
How do you, and I'm, I'm going to really listen to your answer. How do you see this being received by the community, as you say?
Well, the product will be received well. It's how it's stacked in a 10,000-square-foot lot, okay? So what staff had put in place, and that's what the council has directed staff to do, is to revise the city code to allow detached ADUs on all R1 and R1A properties and increase the maximum ADU size to allow to 50% of the principal structure. And that you need to meet all setbacks, meeting all setbacks is... But now it'll go through our process where the community will have a voice because there will be a public hearing.
I encourage that. That's good.
Okay, yeah. All right, councilmember Schultz. This is still discussion. There is a vote and a second.
So looking at the 60 to 80-day, and if I may ask for clarification from our city manager, this could be passed 60 to 80 days. Is that what we're saying? I'm looking for a firm clarification of timeline.
Well, I think, Madam Mayor and council, I think if we look at the calendar, there's, we've got planning commission meetings and that timeline and the advance notification to be considered. So I'd look to Assistant Community Development Dean to help with, with the timeline.
I don't have the calendar in front of me, but we'll have to make sure that, one, we were able to prepare the planning, or the public hearing notice, get that to the newspaper, do the mailing. There won't be any mailings because it's, excuse me, it's just in the newspaper. So then we'll have to write the staff report, get it on the right planning commission meeting. They meet the second and fourth Mondays of every month. And then ultimately the following city council meeting. I don't know off the top of my head if there's any holidays mixed in there or adjustments to the calendar. I don't think there are. But again, we, we have other agenda items and...
And, and that's what I was going to say. Are there other applicants that you're going to kick off to get this one on?
I would say we, we have limited staff in our planning department.
I'm thinking about all of those things.
So that as far as the staff review and the report that goes into this, we may have to either take something to our consultants for them to review or we may have to shift some, some items. But as far as the, the dates, I don't have the calendar in front of me. Maybe Melanie was able to pull that on her computer.
Ms. Mascoli.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor and council. I think what councilmember Schultz's question is, is from an ordinance amendment process, the timeline, not the review of the applicant.
Yeah.
Is that what I'm hearing?
What I'm, the information that I'm looking for is if we change this ordinance and if this applicant comes before us and they, everything fits within it, going through the process, if we follow the one that you are outlining, when can they put a spade in the earth?
Councilmember Schultz, I'd want to talk, and we've got planning commission on the 14th and 20th of September.
And they have to file a, an application. That hasn't been done yet.
So if I'm, if I'm just, I'm going to back off a little bit. They've got those two council, or planning commission meetings, a subsequent meeting would go to council, we have public hearing.
We, we have a building permit application at this point. So if we're, if the direction is to direct the property owner to make application to amend the ordinance, similar to what we did with the medical marijuana dispensary, then they would have to fill out the application, submit any application fee associated with that, and then that starts the process. And so once we're in receipt of that application, then it's 60 to 90 days from, from there. Depending on meeting availability, sometimes we can even bump that up to 45 days. I would say 45 days is the bare minimum, the bare, and that's if every, all the stars align and if...
The application comes in and there aren't any issues with the application?
Mayor.
Yes, yes, Mr. Jamnik.
If I may interject, I understood councilmember Schultz's motion
Yes.
to basically be a council direction to staff to change the ordinance as outlined in the motion.
Yeah.
So we would not need an application from the property owner with any application fees or escrow.
That's right.
It would be a council-initiated direction
That's right.
to have the ordinance drafted, have the planning commission hear it, and have it returned to the city council for final action. I don't know whether you could reasonably expect to get that draft and the public hearing notice for September.
Yeah.
At least not in the first meeting for the planning commission in September. That's a pretty quick, aggressive time.
And that's a separate process from the application then?
Correct.
That's right. And that's what people aren't understanding.
Then depending on work plans for the planning commission and their schedule, it would be timeline, certainly by the second meeting in September, to have that ordinance heard. And then it could come back as early as the first meeting in October. But that's without looking at any of the other items
That's right.
that are on the planning commission or the city council agenda.
And that's not even the review of the application because the review of the application...
Well, we will not have a review of an application. We are changing the code.
Yeah, and then once that is changed, they don't, do not have to come before us if it is, if it complies with, if it complies with the, with the new ordinance. Yeah, if it meets everything.
It, it sounds to me like by early October, this could be done, which then would allow more than enough time to put concrete in the ground before the ground freezes.
If you were looking at January and February, I'd get a little nervous, you know, footing. And I'm, it's going to go on sonotubes, you know, hit the frost line, and it's going to be done right, the code, whatever. And then there's a steel frame. So if I can get the sonotubes in the ground, the frame, the welder, you know, it can, he can work in a little bit of cold. I, I know you guys are compromising and I appreciate the efforts and I do like this last discussion.
Well, but that's, but that's part of the process. We get the ordinance and the codes changed. And if it meets what you want, then you don't have to come before us. But if it doesn't meet, and then you're going to have to come before us again.
That's, that's fine. That's why I did my homework the first time. I did it right. You got the architect. Everything's the code. Stay, I think it will fly through, and that's just my gut feeling. And there may be a red flag and we'll work if I'm going to be working with you. I, I only work Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. I, I'm going to be here tomorrow filling that. If I don't have to, I would love to. But you're going to see a proactive guy. This isn't, the grass doesn't grow under my feet. I, I move.
Okay. Ms. Mascoli.
Well, Madam Mayor, based on the discussion tonight, it appears that council is looking to move this forward. The applicant or the potential applicant has heard the council's comments and feedback. And so he would be able to draft whatever application to meet what I think he's heard from the council. I don't, it doesn't have to come before the council. I'm taking from a staff review perspective. So the conflicts should be minimal, I would say.
Because you got staff review anyway.
Yeah, and in your case, you're, you've, you're well under the 50% limit. So they're really, and you've got your setbacks in place, so...
Okay, so there's a motion and a second on the floor. You want to call the question? I'm going to call the question if there are no other comments. Question is called. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay, and the motion carries.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your time.
The next item is COVID-19 response update. And our city manager, Ms. Mascoli, is presenting. Ms. Mascoli.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council. I am going to sit in for our community development director, Jenny Faulkner, and provide an update on the grant program that the council adopted. Just a little bit of a reminder in the background, the program was adopted several weeks ago. We underwent a pretty aggressive marketing plan, sent out over 2,900 postcards, a number of emails. We also worked on digital marketing. We had had over 216,000 digital impressions. That means it's showing up on someone's screen. 800, almost 9,000 engagements, and then almost 400 clicks to our website itself. So we had a lot of good activity on our site. The application process closed last Friday. And we, as of that day, we have 161 applica, excuse me, 165 applications. 161 of them are for profit businesses, and then the four nonprofits that the council adopted. The total dollar amount, including public, excuse me, nonprofit and for-profit, is $3,176,642. I will say that's a gross number, so that is not without, you know, we've got a consultant that's doing the review for that to see what eligible expenses might be, so that is a, that is a total number. We did have seven individuals who applied more than once. We talked about that at our last meeting. We talked about the number of applications the council would be interested in accepting. And then we have been doing the review as they've come in. So as of late last week, we reviewed 90, excuse me, 79 applications as they came through. If an applicant is missing anything, we're following up with them and they have one week to provide any information to complete their application so they're not disqualified. We do have a goal to get the, get them all reviewed by the end of this week. And then that would mean that there would be one more week for any missing information to be submitted to us. And we are on track to hold the lottery the week of September 7th. And then I believe we've got a, a quick turnaround with checks. I think within something like three days, we will be able to have a check out to those that are successful with the, with the lottery. With that, those are the stats as we have them today. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Ms. Mascoli? Okay, great. Good for our community to hear what's going on.
Just a, I'd like to talk about our, our formal action was to put a million for the for-profit. And we all voiced support for going to 2 million if the applications and the volume warranted.
I don't think we said 2 million. I, we looked at 1.5 because of the hospital.
No, I said 2 million and I heard nodding heads and support. So unless the record is different, I'd like to discuss tonight what we're going to do, make a final decision with that second million to go up to the 2 million cap because clearly the demand was there.
Well, the other that I would still like to, for us to wait on, and that's one of the things before we go to, because we talked about 1.5 with the hospital. But I want to understand where our expenses are and what we can do and how that affects our 2021 budget.
I will like to hear from the rest of the council what they remember discussed, but I thought it was fairly clear.
Well, no, I know you, you said that, but I don't think we agree, at least I didn't. I was going to. So I'm going to go to councilmember Gustafson.
Yeah, we did have the discussion and, and I was okay with us going to 2 million after we figured out what we needed for the city needs. My biggest concern is, and I, I want to, as far as I'm concerned, if we could give it all to business to help them out in the city, it'd be great. I don't want us to get to a point where we're laying off staff in the city next year and cutting services because we gave away the only money we have to, to the businesses. I, I think we need to take a look at where we're at. We're going through our abundance right now. We're going to very shortly know in the next few months what we can do, if not sooner. And if there's money left over, then yeah, let's talk about it. But let's make sure, make sure, let's not make, make sure we don't cut ourselves short, end up cutting services and affecting the families of the people that work, that work here in the city.
Councilmember Workman.
Thank you. Yes, I recall the discussion. I think I was coming in the door at 1.5 and councilmember Keely. Was that 2? But we all kind of landed on, let's see how this goes. And then we can pivot at that point. I think I actually said those exact words using the word pivot. And so here we are at 3.176 million. I'm in favor of looking at a bump to this program. It might make more sense to get to the final, final and see where that is after we've vetted and gone through all, everything. But the, the concept of supplementing this for another million, I, I was in favor with when we first discussed it. And I would be in favor of it as we are discussing it now, so.
You, you're in favor of 2 million?
Mm-hmm.
Councilmember Schultz.
So just checking on council here, it sounds like we also have a question of timeline. Because if we wait a few months, if it's going to take a few months to find out what the city needs, that's past the deadline of when we have to disperse funds.
No, we're going to have the max tax here discussion. That comes up in the last, it's next week?
So, Madam Mayor and council, I can maybe talk about timeline and answer some of those questions? Yeah, just then the council can provide some feedback for us. Next week, on the 25th, we're having a... Next week, on the twenty-fifth, we're having a, a max tax, five-year CIP discussion with the council, kinda sharing with you kinda where we're at. We're weaving the CARES dollars into that as it, as it plays into the overall picture. One component that I'd like to talk about, councilmember Workman referenced this a little bit, the state has a grant program, the county has a grant program, and the city has a grant program. In order of kind of how the programs closed out, the state program went first. So our program says that anybody who, who received deed funding isn't eligible for our program. Now, the way these programs are rolling out with different deadlines and vetting and whatever, we're, we have to kind of coordinate with the state. So we will coordinate with the state once they make their awards, and make sure that nobody on our list has received that, right? And then subsequently, we'll go through our list, and then Dakota County is the, kind of the third leg of that stool, that grant stool. And so there's a couple of different things going on here, that we don't really have the total, the net-net of the dollar amount quite yet. We expect to have that here in the next several weeks, and that'll be a part of the discussion that I think you would find helpful as we, as we go forward. When we, when we are preparing the 2021 budget, and we're preparing our 2020 CARES Act allocation, they, they tie in very closely with respect to 2020 eligible expenses, fund balance, and the 2021 budget and levy. So they're all, I, that's gonna be my four-legged stool, I guess I'll, I'll call it for next week's discussion. So now I'll pause and see if there's any other questions that you might have for me, but.
I would just ask my, my colleagues to wait till after next week. We'll have a better picture of what our expenses are, and how it affects the levy for 2021.
Well, on next week, I believe on the timeline in our background, city manager Lee mentioned September seventh, the week of September seventh was when you would actually be finished vetting all the applications and ready to actually do the lottery pick?
We would hope to, yeah, that would be the timeline, that week of September seventh, so that would be the goal, yep.
Okay.
And next week is when we take a look at our budget.
And in a conversation with city manager Lee earlier, the, it was, it became clear that Dakota County would take longer.
Yeah.
To go through their process and do their picks. And even though we were going to do it much quicker anyway, it sounds like even though the, their deadline for applications was the same as ours, they're gonna take significantly longer to be able to get through the picking, and then getting information from each of the applicants that were picked, and, and vetting them to, to eventually decide the awards, I suppose, put it that way.
Yeah, different processes, but, yes, same end result is to get a grant, grant dollars out the door.
Okay.
Okay, one more week.
It's, it's, there are businesses failing every week out there, and, and, you know, this, this CARES program was signed by President Trump, what, very early April, and the money was awarded to the state of Minnesota a long time ago, many, many weeks ago, and it took, unfortunately, it took our state government a long time, they sat on the money, and they took a long time to eventually allocate it to us. And we are really the, the best line of providing help, whether it's to our hospitals, to our nonprofits, to all our businesses in Burnsville. And so I'm very proud as I, and very happy with our city staff and how fast they turned this program around.
I'm kidding.
It, it, you know, we're, I don't know, there's other cities that have already moved even faster, but what, we were extremely fast.
Not as much money.
But they didn't give out as much, right?
No, they didn't.
We're far more, I think, responsible to our, to help save our businesses, who are still, you know, if you're in hospitality, you're, I don't know how they can still stay open. And so this, this is going to end up being the difference of someone not reopening or reopening. And that may sound, you know, maybe a stretch, but it's true, because there are a lot of small businesses that put in applications. And I just heard of another business today that the city manager Lee and another council member mentioned that may not reopen, and then they're in the hospitality business. And, and so, this, this prolonged time of, of the money getting to the states, and then the states taking too much time, quite frankly, to be critical of them, far too much time to get the money to us, has created a situation where we just watch businesses fail left and right, or hear that they're not gonna be able to reopen. And here, we're sitting on money that could actually help them reopen and save those businesses. So I wanna be very generous, and that's why I pushed for the two million, because that's more businesses that we can help, in hopes that they can make this turn and, and survive this. I am concerned about the city's finances, but not as concerned about saving businesses today with that CARES money, because the CARES money was meant to cover our hard costs, and it was also meant to help our community, and our businesses, and our nonprofits. And so I don't, I don't subscribe to the, to the bus to Abilene that most cities went on with a ten percent allocation or less in some cases. I think that was highly irresponsible of them, in my opinion.
Yeah, what was Lakeville's?
Lakeville allocated ten percent, I believe they had a four-point-eight, four-point-nine million dollar allocation.
And there was larger money than us, they had a lot more money than us.
Yeah, I'll, I'll call my colleagues out again. I think it was highly irresponsible to take money given by the federal government to the CARES Act to help their businesses and their nonprofits survive this, and they're hoarding the money to try and help their own budget. And I think that's, that's just ridiculous.
Well, I think one of the things is that, when we're saying we're taking care of the city, we're taking care of all residential, because if it helps us to reduce the levy, then it helps everybody.
No question.
And also helps businesses.
Yes, we have a lot of tools in our toolbox to do that. This is one that was meant to help businesses too.
Yeah, okay. Are there any other comments anybody wants to make? If not, I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay, and the motion carries. Good night, and thank you for being with us.